Please raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the work session to order. And let's move right into the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we do have one to add today, and that's an update from Maria on the review of the local board of appeal and kind of getting an idea of what's coming up with the county board of appeal. So if we could start with her, then she can get in and out of here and back to what she's doing.
That's fine.
So I don't have a ton of information. This is kind of more just generalized. But there is the sheet of paper. So we actually tried a couple of different things with county or with local board this year. We got all of our meetings done in three weeks. So all of the local board meetings concluded in April this year, which then gave us the whole month of May to focus on open book meetings, which it did seem like it gave us a lot more time to be able to focus on one set and then the other set. So we kind of like that format. Getting all of those meetings done in a three-week period was a little bit rough, but at the same time, we had a lot of positive comments from it. So I think as long as staffing can do that still. We never had a week where we had five days out in the field. We normally are at meetings, we normally had three to four days where we were out in the meeting. So that seemed to work really well. When you look at the sheet of paper that I provided, you can definitely see that the number of appeals each year is going down. With the exception of our, this year, we had 128 appeals at our local board of appeal and equalization meetings. Eighty-eight of those had changes that were made at the meeting. That number is a little bit high, just because we did have 62 parcels that, when our local assessors were turning in all their work, one local was working on his own version of a class change list, and he thought we could see what he was doing. So 62 of those were class changes that were missed. So because they were changed after valuation notices go out, we had to bring them to the board. So otherwise, that number would have been 66 of them. So that was pretty good. The vibe of the meetings this year were pretty, pretty low-key, which was a very nice, deep breath from what we've had in the past years. And we had a couple of really big meetings where not a single person showed up, which is kind of unheard of. Probably the biggest example would be Henrietta Township. That's one of our meetings that typically is two to three hours every year, and we didn't have a single person show up in person to appeal, which then I panicked and was like, did I tell people the wrong date? Are we in the right spot? What is happening? So looking ahead to county board, we, as of right now, we have 19 people signed up to appeal. Not bad. I mean, again, if you look at 2023 was kind of a record year with 489 people. So anything less than that is going to be a lot easier to handle in one night. People can just show up, so that number could go up between now and then. However, 19, I think, is very doable. We're gonna have to stay on task, but I think it's very doable to do it in one evening. Several of those, we do have recommended changes for, and then there are going to be some that we just don't. But more of a conversation. So kind of in general, that's what I wanted to bring up. And then I guess a couple of questions for you guys are, every year, we prepare that board packet. Is there, do you like the format of it? Is there too much information in there? Is there other things that you wish was in there? Now is your time to be like, I really wish we had this, so that if I can get it added to the packet ahead of time. Or if you have any other questions. Fantastic. Don't change a thing. All right. I can do that.
I just, I just wanted you to have an update to see basically that bottom number. So we have some idea of what we're in for, and was it?
June.
June 25?
Five.
Wednesday?
Two weeks from tomorrow.
So Maria, the realtors have said things have just kind of leveled off. And I know you're not into this year for these numbers. But even looking at the numbers for 2025, from the sale study that you did, are you finding that our county's kind of getting to the point where it's leveling off even?
Depends on your area. And I think talking to realtors, there's not a lot of things that are for sale right now, which is why the market is kind of stagnant. And the stuff that is for sale typically is still listed higher than what our estimated market values are. So number of sales is definitely down. We did notice that last year, comparing like two years ago to last year. The number is down, but what people are willing to pay is still, we haven't seen a decrease in that. Our ratios are better every year, just because we've had to do larger increases. So we're getting closer to what people are willing to pay. But in some areas, we're still, we're still missing the mark. So I think it's hard, because like if you, if the number of sales decreases drastically, now your sales market, does one sale make a market? No, but if that's your median sale, then your hands are kind of tied, and you have to do things with it that maybe don't make sense. So yeah, I do think.
So do you adjust even just on one sale?
Depends on if it's your median sale, you have to. So, you know, depending on if it's, we had that at a few places, where you have a district that has six or more on-water sales. And maybe on most of those districts, the sales are all on Long Lake. But the median sale for Henrietta was on Boulder Lake. Well, I have to touch Boulder Lake then, even if there's only one sale on Boulder, because that's my median, that's how I'm gonna get into compliance. And so those get a little tricky sometimes. So in those instances, one sale does make a difference. But in general, I guess, yeah, if you have one sale, it's not a good indication of what's happening in the market. But then we have to look backwards on stuff. So typically, look back three to five years on some of those things. But so, yeah, it's a, there's still a lot that's way higher. You see some of that stuff, and you're like, oof, I'm really hoping that that purchase price comes down, because it's not gonna be good. But, and bear land, that still is not coming down. Actually, we've had several sales now that are, I think average was about $3,200 to $3,300 an acre. And we've had three or four sales now in $6,000 and $7,000 an acre. So it's.
Is that farmland, or is that hunting?
Hunting land.
How much an acre?
Six to seven. Yeah, I think we had one that was $8,000 an acre. It was like a 19-acre parcel.
Wow.
Ten years ago, I thought that was high for North Dakota.
Yeah, yeah. And we are still, we are still fairly low, like especially on our lake shore rates. I did pool like the surrounding counties and just like, hey, give me your top five lakes, just to see where we're at in comparison. Because some of ours are at, I think our highest one is 2200 in front foot. But yeah, surrounding areas are 6,000, 10,000. I mean, it made our numbers look pretty good.
I don't remember last year if you had, because in other years, you had listed like the top five or 10 lakes, and then what they, I find that information really interesting.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think we did it based on, I think we did one based on lake shore value, and then one based on total value of like improved value. Okay, I can do that.
Any other questions or suggestions?
Thanks for your grueling work, you and your staff.
Yeah, I have a pretty awesome team, so couldn't have done it without them.
You find now that people are just kind of understanding finally what, what's happened the last three years?
That was a very, you asked me that question like the last time we talked about, like, did I think the education that we're doing is helping? And I, I think based on what I'm seeing, it's gotta be. Either that, or people are just like numb, and they're just thinking, well, it does no good. It is what it is. But I truly do think that more people, even the questions that we're getting asked at these meetings are a lot more, they're really good questions, instead of just, you know what I mean? Sometimes they just, I think they're understanding the process more. And so we're having really good conversations at these meetings, which has been really good. But, or it's been three years now, and you've heard the same thing, and people are seeing what's out there for sale. And so I think it is helping. The hardest ones are people that have been living in their homes forever. They have no intention of selling, so they don't really know what's going on with the market. Those are really tough, just because they, they don't want to pay the tax value on it. You know, I mean, it's, it all boils down to taxes, too. What is this gonna do to my taxes?
Yeah, and it's even bigger than that. It's, I mean, the price of home insurance now and everything, they're just.
Absolutely.
They're just getting squeezed everywhere.
Absolutely. It's just getting tight everywhere. So I totally understand it. But I do, just in general, it was a very nice reprieve for that, so.
Okay, there's nothing else. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, guys. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
All right, budget workbook.
So Blake is working on putting this data together for our consideration. There's a lot of stuff in there that's, numbers aren't filled in yet, because it's too early to have numbers filled in. This is a lot more to do with the form and the types of information you want to see when you're, when you're, when you get that first draft budget, the first week of August. So maybe I will just let Blake give a little overview of what he's done to this point, what he has left to do, and then we'll ask again the same kind of questions. Is this what you want to see? Are there things in here that you, you know? And then, and if you want to ask specific questions about specific numbers, that's perfectly fine. We'll highlight them and make sure that, that we double-check those. But mostly, it's about, it's about the format and primarily the, the table of contents, and then the introduction of some of, this is, this introduction is significantly different than it has been in the past year because of what's happened at the state and the federal legislative session. So I'll let Blake give an overview of what he's been working on.
Good morning. So am I talking out right here? So basically, what I've been working on is the background information for the upcoming 2026 budget book. A little bit that's gonna be in this document is coming from previous budget books with, from Hubbard County. And then to start doing my research, I was looking at different counties. I used Hennepin's as example, although I know that they need probably a more comprehensive budget book, because they have a lot more moving parts than, say, a smaller county like Hubbard would be. Additionally, I looked at other budget book examples to pull information in sections that I thought would be relevant for Hubbard County to have in there. So beginning with, it starts with going into different tables, charts, and columns to showcase historical numbers and about the levies, full-time employees, and different budget allocations for the previous years. In some cases, that's at five years. Other cases, it's over to 10 years. Or I believe there's one example in there about 20-year history. So it's supposed to be a comprehensive document that's gonna include issues facing Hubbard County also. And I think the big ones this year, which we were looking at, and I haven't got a chance to see what the special session was about yesterday, but for the state and federal legislation cuts, that's supposed to be projected to be pretty invasive, I guess is the word I was looking for there. But for, to give this book a little bit more of a defined scope, I've been collecting data from a bunch of different counties throughout the state to compare to Hubbard County. And then also, I've been adding sections to where just comparing the surrounding regions, like Beltrami, Cass County, Clearwater, and Becker, and Wadena. And then going into the historical numbers, these are gonna show a little bit of fluctuation throughout the history of what Hubbard County's been dealing with, from FTE to tax rates, budgets, expenditures, and revenues. And what I've added for that is I've added sections at the end for department-specific, for descriptions, org charts, and then along with any new proposed positions. And then one last thing in there that I believe I added was the debt repayment projections. And so finally, the last thing I wanted to highlight was the financial management plan. And we haven't touched anything on that yet, as we're gonna review that when the preliminary budget and levy are gonna be set. If you have any questions or any suggestions, I am open to them.
I'm trying to find my notes here, and I can't find them. Can you go to the page that has the, the tax capacity? I really liked the whole book, so thank you for your work on it so far. So if you, is it up or down where you actually have the years listed with the dollar amounts without?
On the left side, it'd be going up for the dollar amounts.
Okay. Oh, no, but you had another one where it showed the dollar amounts, not on the graph. It must be down then.
It's gonna be down.
Well, okay, I'll find it later. I, I know you won't include it in this book, but if you have time someday, I, I think it would be interesting for all of us to see the tax capacity for the surrounding counties. And then also, Jeff, who did, it was Otter Tail and what other counties? When we had our personnel committee, Tom, do you remember? That we were thinking of including, I would like you to include those four counties, because the tax capacity was really interesting for Hubbard. And, and even as we talk to our constituents here, it's really important to realize that our tax capacity is increasing every year, and how important that is, because it's helping to keep the taxes down. I would be interested in those counties.
We, we added for personnel, for wage comparison.
Yeah.
Crow Wing, Otter Tail.
There was four of them.
Itasca, and was it Aiken?
Yeah, yeah. So if you could include all those, and then just send an email to the board showing. I'm not asking you to put in the book, it wouldn't be relevant. But I, I'm curious then of how that affects. I mean, for sure, we already know Wadena County is looking at a huge increase just from what's gonna happen at the state level. And so I, I'm just interested in, are we unique in, I'm guessing it's Cass and Becker, and us would be in a unique position because of our lake shore property?
Itasca and Aiken are probably, well, Itasca is in a similar situation.
Yeah, and so I guess so would Otter Tail, but.
Hubbard and Cass correlate pretty, as far as the tax rate, in that low 30s. I think Becker's a little bit higher, but yeah, we can get that comparative data.
And no hurry. I know you're busy doing this, but it'd just be interesting.
This, this must be the list you were looking for?
Yeah.
And it, it's just anecdotal, and it makes sense. When you look at the chart of tax capacity growth, it's an inverse relationship to the tax rates.
Yep.
Obviously, because, because tax capacity is one of the numbers that's used to calculate that, so.
To the whole argument that you can't always cut your way out of problems. You've gotta grow.
Yep.
Blake, one of the, Bill Sterns from Wadena County, I think at the beginning of the year, or last December, handed out a sheet, and I know either Jeff or Denise has it somewhere. And it shows every single county, and if you take, I can't remember, a $350,000 house or whatever, and it shows the difference of what, what the average would be paid in every single county. It's really interesting to see where, I think we were number eight at being the lowest, and then the other counties, just because of their tax capacity. What a difference that made.
I use that all the time, just my own anecdotal experience. When I was in, in Monaga on the Stocking Lake and had a $200,000 home. This was 20 years ago, 25 years ago. I was paying close to $4,000 a year in taxes. I now live on Long Lake with a home valued three or four times higher on a much bigger lake, and I'm just finally paying that amount of taxes on my home that I did down there 25 years ago. I don't think people kind of realize that sometimes, that, you know, it's, I get it. You still don't want to see your tax, nobody wants to see their tax increase. But Hubbard County is pretty good. We're in a pretty good spot, even though it's still painful to see your taxes go up. A lot of other places aren't.
Right.
Don't have the tax capacity we have to absorb some of these things when they happen.
So there's one, I'm sorry, there's one piece in here that we're gonna talk about, and that is, I do have a list of the proposed staff requests for 2026 that we can talk about once you've, we've finished questions about the format of this book. And then the conversation after that would be about general targets. What do you, what do you want us to try to shoot for this year?
Zero.
Knowing that with, we have negotiations coming up, and we're gonna have increases, we're, we're gonna be about, about 6% just to carry the current staff salaries, wages, and benefits without adding anything. And that's not taking into account, although I do believe, I believe that most of the budget impacts that we were anticipating for '26 have been pushed further down the road with these, with the state budget agreements. We're not gonna see all of them in '26, but I, they're still coming. They're still coming for '27, for '28, so we'll, we'll have to have conversations about that, but.
Any other comments about?
I was just gonna say, I like the budget workbook. I'm assuming it's gonna be on our website when it's all ready. It'll help those people that actually want to research and see why their, why their taxes are what they are, where they go to, and stuff like that. It'll help inform those people. The people that don't want to know any of this stuff, they just want to keep their taxes low, they're probably not gonna look at it. But like I say, it's gonna be out there. There's gonna be an opportunity. If I do get some constituents calling me and this and that, I might be able to refer them to something like this and say, well, this is where it goes to, if I can't specifically answer a question or stuff like that. So I appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this.
And these, each of these charts is gonna have a little summary sentence or paragraph to put a little context around it. Because the context is coming from the, you know, the, the the text above and below, but it's hard to figure out exactly where it is. So we'll do some, some indexing of the graphs, and then a little bit, a little bit of a summary, so that when you look at that, you're like, well, why am I looking at these two on this page? And right now, I'm not entirely sure if these two are, should be on the same page. I think they just are, because that's how it's, you know, work in progress. But there will be some additional context, and when you look at a chart, you'll understand why that chart is there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, I just got, it's kind of still a work in progress. I got basic numbers this morning. I got the list of the positions that have been requested yesterday. And we, the, the one that's grayed out is identified as a need. They're not asking for that, so that's not included in the number below.
Is that if the projected?
No, that's just, that's just due to, that's just due to increased caseload in adult services. And you'll, I will get together the actual requests that document the numbers, et cetera, in here, and I'll put, this is just a very brief summary to say, family-based service provider. So this increased caseload and the fact that we used to contract for some of these services, and that provider's not available anymore, so more of that responsibility is falling on us. And then these eligible.
So Jeff, I got a question from what you just said then. So then, whatever we paid for the contract.
We should have available for, for this position. Yes. We're not paying the contract, so we can keep that money in-house for that, to pay for that service.
So it'd be nice to have that dollar amount somewhere.
And we'll see this in, we'll see that in context when we're looking at their, at their budget proposal. But in a couple of cases here, we've got increased requirements from, from DHS, right? Again, then the level of detail required for doing intakes and managing cases is going up, and it's not helping us serve more people in the community. It's actually, it's actually cutting our ability to serve people in the community. So, and we've been working with that quite a bit. We knew, you knew I was gonna put in a request for an accountant. We'll put more detail on all of these. IT technician, I think we've, you know, 2018, we hired our first, our first staff person in that department, and quickly went to three, and it's just, it's very hard for them to keep up with it. Although, you guys know how quickly they do respond, and they do, they do manage to do it. Seasonal park workers is not really a big deal. The reuse, the more activity we have in the reuse center, the more staff it's gonna take to do that. We'll have to see these all in context of what that does relative to revenue options that are coming in. And then this environmental coordinator, as I understand it, is just a rearrangement and a promotion of somebody to a supervisor position, not a, not a full additional FTE, which is why it's, it's lower dollar value. And that, that makes, that makes some amount of sense. To this point, Josh has had just a single supervisor for all the operations over there. And what he's proposing is, is that organics and reuse would have a supervisor, and then the solid waste would have a supervisor, and they would each be supervising a number of people to, to be a little more efficient in the way they're doing that work. So this is just a first, first blush. Again, this number does not include the 200. So we're gonna have to show that in the context, and it, right now, obviously, we can't say yes to all of these. We might not be able to say yes to any of these when we see it. But that's the information I had as of the end of the day Friday when they were due. And just grabbed rough numbers from very, very preliminary payroll worksheets. Actually, I shouldn't even say very preliminary. I know Jane's up to date with the, all the information she has this week. What she sent me this morning is current. But that changes until we get to the point of presenting it in the budget.
Then you had human services offset by state money, federal money, anything like that?
Yes, yeah. And, and these positions would all be on that 40% to 50% reimbursement rate. But that's, you know, this number is including benefits. So you have to take the benefits out of here, and the 40, 40 to 50% of $60,000, $65,000 is what will be coming in. And one of the things that I really want to help human services do this year is to show the ratio, the impact of having the right number of staff to caseload to maximum reimbursement that we're getting from the state for these programs. If you have people that are, are handling twice the caseload, they should. They're not efficient, they're not effective, and we're not collecting all the revenue we should be to provide services in the community. I can't imagine that we'd ever have more staff to, staff to client ratio than we would, than we would need. But if we get to the right level, then there's a, the best blend of reimbursement coming from the state. So yes, we'll see all of that by child and family, adult, and then, then all the different departments will show the programs that they're running and the anticipated revenue and the hours that they're allocating to them, so that you really get to see these in context. These numbers are completely and totally out of context. But if we've got $20 million worth of, of compensation and taxes, or wages and taxes, and we add this, that is, you know, is that 5% increase? So that's, that's challenging.
Yeah, because for over $100,000, it's.
So 2%, yeah, yeah, but 2.5% increase.
So are we fully staffed at human services right now?
We have, I believe we're really close.
Because remember the districts, they talked about how even if there are mandates that come down, was that a district? That they're, they will be fillable. That they're, they won't be fillable, there's not enough people.
You can't find the workers?
Yeah.
Qualified that have gone to school for social work that are available to take those positions.
You never know when you find an opportunity. Saturday, when I was, when I was golfing, I was golfing with someone who, whose wife works in a social service program at, at Concordia and Morehead. And I said, if you have anybody that needs internships or needs, is looking for employment, you know, we're already connected with them via their social media accounts that colleges use a, a program called Handshake to bring employers and college students looking for work together. So we're part of that program. So I said, if, if they, if they have people who are looking, if they're from this area, you know, if somebody's from this area, it's much easier for them to do an internship or think about a job. If somebody's, you know, we've had a conversation. People in rural Minnesota, they get done with high school and they leave, right? We have to find ways to make it easier for them to come back, and that's to tell them the kind of jobs that we do have available here that make it possible for them to come and do that, whether it's an accountant or a, a social worker or, you know, anything that we have. We've been, we've been filling a lot of positions again lately. We've had a new deputy start yesterday, so I think that, I think the biggest remaining unfilled positions are those dispatch jailer positions that we opened up a couple of years ago. We've never filled them all. So I would have to read the board on Gina's desk. Oh, and she says, yes, transit has a couple of openings. So that's not social, social workers or case aides, but it is the transit drivers. One of them is because we promoted one of them over to the veteran service office. So one of our part-time drivers took the job over to veteran service office. So that's a good reason to have, have an opportunity for someone else, so.
Sometimes I wonder too if we did a better job of promoting Heartland Express if we could increase quite substantially the amount of revenue generated.
I will, there's a couple of, in August, we're supposed to be working on our application for a grant to build a building, a new transit garage. And that would probably, sometime around that time, would be good to bring Jason in here and Brian and have a conversation about what they're doing relative to thinking about expanding service, to increasing revenues. And, and take, I mean, every year we look at the budget, and I, I look at the numbers, but I, because it comes mostly from grant, we don't give it a lot of, of carryover, but it'd be really nice to know the grant operations versus what are we generating in fares that help to cover the balance of that. Remember, this year, we saw that there's going to be an increased cost share for us when we sign the new transit agreement. So the fares are going to have to cover, the state dollars are going away. Instead of a five percent match, we're going to have a ten percent match on that. So as soon as we start getting successful, just like at the nursing home, then they'll cut their, cut their resources and we'll have to continue to grow in order to make it work, so.
You should reach out to Todd County and ask them how they do with their friendly rider, because I, I, I see them marketing all over the place. And I'd be curious what their revenue generation is compared to ours. But they're, they're, they're certainly more aggressive. And I think, based on what he mentioned here last time, that most of the cost is covered by the grant or, or we make enough revenue to pay our, pay our share, our portion, our match. So if you can increase that revenue, that, that's capital money can be used for other things.
Yep.
So are they doing, is Todd County doing billboards or what are they doing? I'm just looking up Todd County here. How, is Todd County doing billboards or how are you seeing them?
Ah, I see it in paper, radio.
Okay.
Social media.
Okay.
I know Pine County, I was talking to a commissioner from, from there. They volunteered to be part of a private pilot program to expand service to rural areas of the county. That was, I think that was, I think that was at AMC in August last year. It'll be interesting to track him down and talk to him about it and see if it actually turned into something positive or not. I did talk to him in December when we were in Bloomington, and he made it sound like they were still in the meeting processes then. So maybe we can find out if that's being successful or not and.
You know, it comes up all the time, you know, trying to expand services in Kalaport and Akle, and even the run to Bemidji or whatever it might be. Well, if you can increase your ridership revenue and, and generate more revenue, then you need to meet your match. Then you'll have the flexibility to maybe expand your service area. If you don't do that, it's kind of hard to expand your service area.
Well, and we're, we've been having conversations about running some vans instead of all the buses because of the, of the cost of them, and you don't need to run a bus that carries twenty-eight, thirty people when you're transporting three or five. So we, I know that they're also looking into options for that.
Just expanding services to some of the underserved areas probably would not generate enough revenue to support it on its own. But if you generate more activity in the area where there's a lot of activity, then that's, that extra revenue over and above what it's costing you, now you can support those underserved areas. But you gotta grow it to be able to do it.
Yeah, AMC just sent out an update.
Oh, did they, on the legislative?
Ten minutes ago, on the legislative.
Okay.
And the only thing that I'm seeing that's really, is good news, is that they did pass a seven-hundred-million-dollar bonding bill that includes money for local road improvement program and local bridge replacement program. So that, that is not going to slow those, that process down.
Is there anything on SCORE?
I think it said like two-hundred-and-fifty million of that was roads and bridges, right? The rest is whatever.
Forty-two million in LRIP, twenty million in local bridge, five million in local road wetland replacement. So it's not even that, it's seventy-five million. We'll have to see if, if anything came to pass with the solid waste. It's not particularly called out in here, but it was on the list to be heard yesterday.
That was.
Hopefully just more than just startup money.
There, yeah, John Steiner's proposal was to split it in, in two phases and, and do the startup. So instead of sixty million, I think it was only, it was under twenty, wasn't it, to get started?
I thought maybe twenty-five seems to ring.
I thought the interesting point in that his letter there too was, people understand in legislature incident that that was fifteen percent of all the area in Minnesota. So it seems like a big figure, but when you figure how much geographically it's covering, it's a big deal.
And the, the time and money that has already been spent to get to where we are at this point, and you see with the state and MPC and that, haven't done anything.
Yeah. And at the same point in time, last conversation, with the conversation we had at, at the meeting on Friday, was about Josh needs to have a, a staffing plan in case that happens, right? If that, if that's in place and working the way we want it to be, how does that impact staffing at the north station and the, versus the south station? And how are we going to change our operations and what other impacts is that going to have? So we've been talking about bonding to make it happen, but we haven't talked about the operational costs it's going to take to do that. And I'm assuming they're going to go up, right? And we can't support those costs with levy dollars, we have to do it through the solid waste fees. So as the financial management plan suggested a year and a half ago, we need to start ramping those up to take care of the capital needs there and to anticipate those operational needs as they're changing in the future so that we don't, we won't have to slap a fifty percent increase on it one year when we're out of money. So hopefully we'll get, we'll be pushing those thoughts further and further down the road and thinking about them.
Guy Fawcett tomorrow, so it'll be interesting what John has to say.
I would, I would expect that there's an update email from him sometime this morning still. One way or another. He's really good at following that stuff along, and he's kind of a, kind of a watchdog on that. And it's super funny because I, I talk to Chuck all the time, and Chuck just is completely hands-off because of how involved he is at that level.
Well, there was no cut to Pelt.
It's about another year.
Yeah, we have another year.
That's just going to get pushed down the road too. But this is good because this is right now when we need to be, when we need to be getting these worksheets. So we've got the new, we've got the new budget requests. HR, payroll, we're putting together all that information. They'll be populating the 2026 budget with all the wage and benefit data based on our assumptions. And then the worksheets will be going out to department managers, and then they'll have about two weeks to fill in their operational revenues and expenses. And then we'll turn it around and, and you will all see them before that first meeting in August. It's the regular schedule. But now we have all these other things, so we can, we can fill in a number of the blanks where we thought we were going to see cuts or not see cuts, or we'll still identify them.
Still think the biggest thing is, is the, not biggest dollar-wise, but the biggest hit is AIS.
I'm trying to find that in here.
Fifty percent reduction in aquatic invasive species aid.
Did you find it?
It's under, under the taxes in the email.
Under taxes? Okay, so that did go through the fifty percent reduction? I know it was put back in. Oh, the agreement does include fifty percent reduction for AIS, okay. Do you remember we have in our AIS fund? I know Eric's been putting money away.
I believe the last time I spoke with him, it sounded like he had a year's worth of expenses. You set aside.
Yeah, and that doesn't include if there's an emergency.
No, no.
We don't have funding for emergency, though. Okay.
Yeah, so our, our funding was a little over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year for that program, two-hundred-and-fifty-six, I think. So again, if, if we're not doing STS and we're going to kick in that twenty thousand dollars that it takes to keep that program running, which makes all the sense in the world, what are we going to do relative to AIS? As long as the state's still a partner, are the Lake, Lake Associations going to continue to be partnered or provide their portion? You know, a lot of questions yet to be answered. All the Lake meetings are coming up in the next month or two, aren't they? Or have some of them already happened?
For what?
Lake Association meetings.
Oh, usually July and August.
And when did that, what year did that hit? Our twenty-eight, so we got a little time to react to that.
To react to which?
AIS, so.
Okay, we kind of.
Generalize, that's, I mean, that, I am going to do what I can to put together a preliminary, preliminary levy increase not to exceed seven percent. It's going to be really tough, and that means that there's probably not room for a lot of additions. But I'm anticipating five and a half, six percent is necessary to carry just the current staff. Again, we're negotiating this year, so we don't know what that number is, we're going to be guessing. We do know what our cap is on health insurance, so that, that's nice to know that number going into this season. And that's just, it, it's going to be tough to get to that number and take everything else into account, but, and not use fund balance. We still don't have more fund balance than we need, so we really need to be maintaining that. Fortunately, we're not at a point where we need to be planning to put more into savings. So we'll just have to be really creative for the next couple of years to see what happens.
So if you look under Health and Human Services, I'm giving you my Prime West report right now. So at the last Prime West meeting, we looked at how to cut potentially seven million dollars next year. Yeah, because our losses are so huge, because we're, they're not even getting reimbursement to cover what services are costing. So Karma passed, which means that the counties that decide to go with Prime West have the option of doing, instead of giving the option of two payers, we can become a single payer. And if you look at Hubbard County, I just looked last Thursday before the Prime West meeting, there's several people in Hubbard County that have opted to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield. It doesn't mean that the, the services aren't any different. It basically just means there's more paperwork for the staff that's, and so that will go back to a single payer. So that will be huge to help Prime West have some stability with their money. So that was a good thing that passed.
Good to see their balance in the budget by increasing the tax on cannabis.
Yeah.
And taking it, taking it away from cities and counties.
They even showed balance, I thought they still showed a one-point-nine deficit.
No, the tax.
I was kind of asking, you know, aren't they required to balance?
Yeah, the tax, well, no, I'd, yeah, I don't, depends on where you show some of the stuff. Yes, they are required to balance, but they're only required to balance to a certain point. But the tax bill says that they're, they're keeping the, they're eliminating the local cannabis account, which means the state's keeping all those taxes, and they increased it from ten percent to fifteen percent.
And they haven't even opened up a dispensary.
They haven't even opened up a dispensary yet.
At least it was all planned out.
That's great, we do the work and they can keep the revenue.
Like you're surprised.
Is there anything else?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chair. Blake and I will be working on incorporating this information and real numbers into that budget book. And then you are about seven weeks away from seeing the first draft budget and draft proposed levy. I'm just, I'm not going to show a number that's higher than seven percent because it's just not realistic to debate. We gotta, we gotta leave ourselves room to work with it.
Look on the bright side, it looked a lot worse a couple of months ago.
It did look a lot worse in March. We were talking twelve percent.
Double-digit, yeah.
It's going the right way.
And as, and as they said at the district meeting, it really is because all the counties and all the commissioners got together and, and made themselves known at the Capitol.
I did have a side conversation with Julie too, but, you know, AMC needs, needs to figure out how to do exactly what they did this year more often. Sometimes when you have a legislature like it is, you gotta bypass it, go right to the taxpayer. That's how Reagan got a lot of his stuff done in a, in a split deal. And they need to come up with a strategy on how to do that and use the media better to get to the taxpayer. Because when the taxpayer understands exactly what's going on and they can convey that to their politicians, the politicians wake up.
I had a meeting last night, thinking Minnesota gave a presentation, and they're, they're putting together Doge numbers in the department for Minnesota, and they're going to be having a lot of across the state, and there'll be some locally too, meetings of, so you can see what their numbers that they came up with.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah, there'll be one in Otter Tail, one in Bemidji, one in Brainerd, so you might want to, I got a little flyer on it, I didn't bring it with me. Um, I can get them for you.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Okay, or at least get to the, to QR code so you can look at it.
One thing too, at districts last week, I talked to Josh about the county attorney, and they were at seventy-five thousand. And they went up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand because there was state dollars covering certain cases. And so I, I told Jeff that he was going to check with Josh.
The reimbursement from seventy-five dollars in our one-hundred-and-twenty-five.
Yeah, because, because part of that would be covered. So they were at the same weight we were. Thought that was interesting.
So yeah, it was, it was powerful that everybody.
Yes.
was reaching out kinda somewhat more directly to constituents.
Was it, I don't remember who, who the governor was, and this was probably quite a few years ago. They'd asked the Minnesota residents if they had ideas where they could save money, you know, to send in their ideas. And I sent in one about highway beautification projects. You know, I mean, they make these nice new highways and then they do all these plantings and stuff like that. And myself, I'm thinking, so if you're driving down the road, aren't you supposed to be driving down the road, not paying attention to the trees and all that? Plus, we're in Minnesota, there's already a lot of trees and a lot of greenery and stuff. So, do we really need to be spending millions of dollars? Now, I'm sounding like my email. Do we need to be spending millions of dollars on these beautification projects? For a, a system where you're supposed to be driving on the road, paying attention? I don't know if anything ever came about it, but like I say, that's something I've thought about. And I mentioned the last week too about gravel roads, if everybody drove on the right-hand side, they'd last twice as long and it wouldn't cost any more money.
It's just that that, it's, the trail is down the center of the road and so you just tend to sit there.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm always, and I'm amazed that, like I say, I live on one-eighteen and I'll be on the right-hand side and yet, you know, here's somebody, I might be behind them and they're, I can't get by them because they're right in the middle of the road.
And some of that, yeah, some of that depends on how much crown is in the road too. If there's a steeper crown, ten, people tend to drive in the center because they feel like they're leaning or tipping.
Is it documented about middle-of-the-road driving versus right-hand?
Yeah, actually, at the township level, at Minnesota Association of Townships had that.
Okay, 'cause it was the first I've heard of it when you said it last week.
They use the example of, say, fifty people drive out in the morning to go to work and then those fifty people drive back home. If they all drive down the middle of the road, that's a hundred vehicles have been across that same trail. But now, if they went to the right-hand side, it'd be fifty on the way out and fifty on the way in.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So, is the sixty-six billion an actual overall reduction in the previous biennium?
No, that's the, that's the actual budget, as I understand it.
Yeah, what was it, the previous biennium though?
I would have to look.
So, I mean, is it an effective actual cut or?
No, it's, it's, it's not a cut, it's still, it's still an increase, but it's a cut from projections. So, and then also last week at AMC, Commissioner Christiansen asked about the, whether or not the county should be planning to be participating in more NACO events. And I've had a conversation with Julie and got some, some contacts for some people who are participating. And I, and I can share that with you, but so, in the budget, I'm gonna put, put a lump sum for commissioners to participate more in NACO events. And whether it means going to the event or whether it just means keeping a membership and, and participating. NACO does so much stuff online that you don't have to go to the annual conference to, to benefit from, from the work that they do. But I'll, I'll put something in there.
So, I'm on one of their committees, you know, the energy committee? There's chances to be on all kinds of committees and it is really interesting because you have counties from all over the nation. And I don't find the committee amount really relevant to this part of the US 'cause a lot of the counties are large counties in the east or west coast. But I find the information really interesting and to see a bigger picture. So, even one of the ways to get more involved would be if there's a, a committee opening through AMC to be on one of those committees. If you put your name up. And AMC, or NACO website has all kinds of information on it.
I'll share, check your email, Denise just sent Thinking Minnesota links.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That would be all I have for this morning.
All right. Anything else to discuss? Okay. We will adjourn. When do you need these cards, Denise?
Um, I'm not sure which, what is the date on the, the most, on the one on the top?
I don't, I didn't pay attention.